Councilor Newton Azor, how are you?
I'm doing great. How is the mayor of much of town?
It was fantastic. Oh my God. It was crazy. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our first city council meeting since August the 7th. First city council meetings Monday, September 23rd, 2024 at 4:00 PM. I will now call the meeting to order. Gabe, would you give us a well call, please? And also, please, Gabe, give Gabe a big round of applause. This is his last meeting with us. This is our deputy city.
Thank you, your honor.
He'll be taking office as the Benton County Commissioner, so we're proud of you and we wish you best of luck in your new endeavor.
Thank you. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councilors Newton Azor. Novak.
Here.
Gil.
Here.
Kopczynski.
Here.
McGee.
Present.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, your honor.
Very much. Is there business from the public this afternoon? Oh, wow. A few more names joined the list. Okay, first is Terry Mauer. Is that right? Oh, you're with the group? Okay, so can you pick? So if you're speaking on the same topic, I would just personally like one person to come up and speak. I'll give them five minutes. Okay, if it's a separate issue, fine, use your three minutes. But if it's the same issue, just pick a spokesperson. Okay, please. No, no, come up here. Please join us at the front. You'll be recorded and part of history, so. State your name, not your address, okay? We don't do that anymore. Be three minutes. Yes, please. There's a microphone.
You said she gets five if she's speaking for the group.
Are you speaking for the whole group?
Well, we all had a little of our own scenario. We live in three different places, but we're incurring the same issues.
So it's generally the same issue, then just five minutes.
Yeah, and I have statements from a neighbor that can't make it that was sick. I have a statement from the neighbor behind me, and then I have my own statement.
Read your statement and give the other statements to the clerks. They can make a copy.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm here.
Who are you?
I am Laura DeBose.
Thank you.
I'm here to bring to your attention several serious issues that my family and I, along with our neighbors, have been facing due to an open alleyway located beside our home. My name is Laura DeBose, and I'm a resident of Albany, Oregon off of Willamette Avenue Southeast. Unfortunately, our community has been plagued by repeated criminal activities directly associated with this alleyway. Over the past several years, my family and I have experienced the following incidents. These are some, not all. Our community mailbox has been broken into at least three times. Our vehicle's window has been smashed resulting in stolen items. Our fence has been repeatedly vandalized and broken, compromising our privacy and security. The broken fence has allowed people to peer into our back bedroom, which is extremely concerning. We have been, we have witnessed gang members fighting directly outside our home. Strangers have opened our back gate, forcing us to install a lock for our safety. We recently discovered a glove left inside our garage indicating that someone had gained entry through our back doggy door. These events have not only caused us financial loss and emotional distress, but they have also made us fear for our safety and well-being. The open alleyway beside our home has became a thoroughfare for individuals at all hours of the day or night resulting in increased traffic and heightened our opportunities, or heightened opportunities for criminal activity. As a concerned resident, I am urging the city council to consider closing or restricting access to this alleyway to help protect our neighborhood and make it a safer place for all. I believe that doing so would significantly reduce the likelihood of further crimes and disturbances in our community. I kindly request that this matter be taken into serious consideration at the city council meeting. I'm confident that with your support and attention, we can work together to create a safer environment for everyone in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and for addressing this crucial or critical issue. I look forward to your response, and I'm happy to provide any additional information or speak further on this matter if need be. Sincerely, Laura DeBose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so can you provide the other letters to him as well for copies? Right there. Okay, thank you. He'll make, he'll make sure they get to us as far as our copy of it. Next is Terry. You ready to go now?
Hello, Terry Mann. Live on Lynn Avenue, right at the easement. Point I want to make is that crossing of Knox Butte from the easement, okay? The easement ends in a ditch, okay? People walk right up against my fence to get to an area where they could cross the ditch area and then may go, maybe go to Quickie Mart or whatever. But you're funneling people basically right through my property into that area. And of course, I agree with the issue that there are transients sometimes there. And I've had people peering over my fence and chase some folks off, so that's my. But there's an actual safety issue of crossing Knox Butte, especially for kids, okay? They should have like a push button, a warning cars to stop, and there should be a marked crossway, crosswalk. If you're going to have an easement there, you know, you just can't end that easement in a ditch. My.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to direct staff to take a look at both issues and then get back to us. So we typically don't respond during Business From the Public. We'll respond also from business during the, from the council. Next is John Waserna? Wiserman? Wiserman? Wiseman, that's you? Please.
Yeah, I just wrote my name down in case anybody asks questions.
That's, it's, you have three minutes.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. All right. If you can provide that information to the city clerk, W C clerk, we appreciate it. Mr. Quinn. Mike Quinn?
Mike Quinn, Albany resident. I'm just here for two different issues. The first one is apparently, and I'm not sure about this, but the $16 paving, the $16 fee that we're looking at doing for paving streets a couple of years ago, probably 10 years ago, and I don't think there's nobody here that was here at that time. We talked about a six cent a gallon gas tax, and that was by American Open. A lot of us supported it. Just want to, you know, I'm kind of a numbers guy, but if you do the 16 cent, $16 thing, that's almost like buying 266 gallons of gas, everybody in Albany for that six cents. So I think that you guys should go back and look at that for calculation of just going with a straight per tax, or then everybody pays it instead of just, you know, people on their water bill and so on. And the other thing is, is that to really watch out, because we got a new paver here about eight, nine months ago. I see a couple of new trucks. I see some people out experimenting on paving right now and stuff. I mean, Madison's my greatest example, Madison Street. It's horrible. I think we know that. So if we're going to try to do what, we used to have a guy by the name of Larry Bailey. I think you would want to really behoove to get a hold of him. He's about 82 years old now. He knew everything about paving, and he used to have a crew out there in the summers and stuff. They'd save money all year long on that and go out and pave, and he did a fabulous job. So if we're going to get into paving business, it behooves you to really look at that, because from what I'm seeing, I don't think the experience is there, in my opinion and stuff, so. And then the second thing is, it's the two lots that were just vacated. I see that taxpayers are paying money to circle the lots with rented fence and stuff. I really pushed this last time I was here, because you had a group here, and in fact, actually, I talked to them outside from Helping Hands. And back in the day, before Lowe's was built, we were going to attempt to try to move the six plexes over there. Because at that time, Director John Donovan wanted to try to do a transitional housing project there. We couldn't get the state money and stuff, so that kind of like went away. But at that time, Wes Hare, he told me that, I mean, he told all of us that, you know, he would give us the two lots and stuff. Because we've got, I think, one house left to have to buy out, and then it's all right there. I got called today by my source inside the city here that you guys are thinking about putting these up for auction. I didn't realize that we're still in the money-making business and stuff. I see some confusion there, but you need to check this out. That I, I think that they would take them and take the responsibility and keeping them clear until they do something. And I, I can't be here Wednesday night, but I think you're going to have some people coming here from Helping Hands. So it really behooves you to really look into that, because we need something like this. And those lots were promised, and I don't think we should be in the real estate business. I think we kind of did that with the parks thing and stuff, made some money that nobody can find out what happened to that money, so.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
All right, thank you.
Bill Van Vliet is here today? Oh, there you are.
Hello, council. My name is Bill Van Vliet. I'm the owner of Van Vliet Meat and Food Service. And I'm here to let the city know that we are interested in pursuing the said lots that the gentleman was just talking about. We have, since our addition four years ago, maxed out our warehouse, and we need to do some more building. And we'll need warehouse space, parking, and overflow space for our inventory. So basically, we're pursuing all, as you all know, land, land around there is not plentiful. So we would like to talk with the city about the purchase of those properties.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We don't dress during this time during Business from the Council.
Thank you.
But I would like the city attorney to tell us the process for land acquisition for city land.
So for land disposition, in this case, the city would have to have a public hearing. They would have to advertise the public hearing. And then they would be able to sell the property if they chose to do that to whoever they wanted. And it's not a, it's not, we don't have to go through an RFP to take the high bidder. We could, we could do that, but the statute doesn't require it. So if we have a advertised public hearing, allow the public to come in and speak to the matter, then the city can, can dispose of the property how they see fit.
We would have to declare it a surplus, correct?
You would declare a surplus. It wouldn't be, you probably did that at a meeting before we would do the advertisement of the, of the property, but yeah. And there's some other issues that I'm sure staff will, will talk to you about at some point how we dispose of that property because of how it's zoned right now and what some of the people that are wanting it, what the uses would be, and how that would impact us going out for a UGB expansion for industrial property if we were to rezone industrial property to something other than that, and then go to the state and say we need more. So there could be some issues that we run into there. Matthew would, would speak to that, probably at a different, I don't put him on the spot today, but another meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
So next on tonight's agenda is granting public utility easement and dedicating right of way to South Albany Park property. Yes. Oh, is anybody else in chambers like to speak?
Yeah, I apologize for being late. I would like.
No worries.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michael Thompson. I live in the West Albany neighborhood. I came down here, I was a little surprised to see on Wednesday's agenda the second reading of a utility fee proposal. Just last week, I was at a neighborhood meeting, the North Albany Neighborhood Association meeting. We had discussion about utility fees, and the mayor himself talked at length and implied that there's no utility fee on the horizon. That takes a lot of process. And he went into that process, and I understand what a second reading means. The second reading means it's time to vote on Wednesday. And I just want to say, before you take that vote, I'm, I'm against another utility fee. Too many recently. I think you're, you're going against the spirit of Measure Five, and, and some of these have to be put to a vote of the people at some, at some time, so that's, that's what I had to say. Thanks for the time.
Next, anyone else? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is grant of public easement, dedicating the right of way of South Albany Park property. Kimberly Ladeane, director, please.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Welcome back. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I am here as this summer, Lennar Home Builders and Consumer Power, CPI approached the city requesting a public utility easement on land owned by our department. A little history on that property. It's 26.61 acres. That is called the South Albany property. It was purchased back in, it's been over 15 years. I apologize. The data's left me. And it was thought of that at that time, potentially, we would do a sports complex down there, or it would be used for land banking. As we got a decent deal at that time, it was outside the UGB. Well, since then, lots of conditions have changed in our community, and in the 2021 master plan, it was pretty much decided that it's not feasible to stick a large facility down there. We don't have the funds for it. It's wetlands. And our community really wants us to take care of what we have instead of, you know, building additional stuff. So, so at this time, we do not have plans for development at that property. Our hope is eventually to have about five acres of a park down there and potentially come back at a later date and talk about divesting that property. So with that said, when the request came in to put the public utility easement and right of way on our side, it doesn't negatively impact us at this time. And if it helps general development down there, we're happy with the offset that we're getting financially and are in favor of moving forward with it.
Counsel.
So does this prevent us to, prevent us in changing our minds back again if we decide to do that? If, you know, public opinion changes and we change our plans? Is that going to prevent us from going back to that idea or no?
So at this point, it would just be that those sections that have the PUE and the right of way, we wouldn't be able to develop. But this in no means does anything to the 26 acres. We still own it. If we were to ever have those conversations, it would have to come back, be publicly noticed, surplus. Like, we're, we're a ways from that conversation. But in, in giving, granting them the public utility easement, it just means we won't be able to develop necessarily right up to the, to the right of way. But that could be a benefit for us, depending on what we stick there.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Councilor Novak.
Thank you. With regard to even future development and having a public utility easement, I would love staff to provide some information regarding water rights. I'm really concerned about all this development that's being proposed currently and potential future development without knowing where we stand with regard to water rights. I know that 20 years ago, it was 32 MGD, and I would really appreciate some information if you would. Director Bailey.
Water rights as, are you referring to our ability to provide adequate water for the community?
I am. We have an awful lot of development that's already going on and been, been proposed and being proposed. And I'd really like an update on where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can tell you off the top of my head, we have, the city of Albany has adequate water right for development of the city all the way out to build out of the urban growth boundary, which would be in 2084 or some, there's some year in the future, and I forget the population number, but it's almost double where we are right now. We have a large volume of water rights, and we're, we have the advantage that our water rights are old. In Oregon, the way water law works is first in time, first in right. So our water rights date from the 1800s. So if there were a water shortage, for instance, in the state, water rights are curtailed in order of age, newest to oldest, so we, ours would be shut off very, very late compared to those other water right holders in the basin. We also have, since we built the Albany Millersburg plant, we have Millersburg's water rights. We have an agreement that both communities use both communities' rights for the benefit of both communities. So when you add Millersburg's rights onto Albany's rights, we have far more water right capacity than we anticipate demand all the way to build out, which, as I said, is in like the year 2084 or something like that. So there is absolutely no concern for future water demand. Now, we don't have the current ability to deliver enough water to supply 120,000 people. That's because we're not going to go ahead and build treatment and distribution for 100,000 people when we don't have those people here. So the Water Master Plan that we just provided recently outlines all of that growth and development, all of those projects, the costs of those things in general in the long term, and then very specifically, the demand we expect to see in the short term. So I would reassure you that there's no risk of Albany running out of water anytime soon.
Well, I appreciate that. I would still very much like to see information regarding water rights in writing, because I never have done, and I would really be most appreciative. Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, any other questions for director? Thank you, director.
So this will come back on consent calendar on Wednesday night?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Business from the Council, and I'll start with Counselor Novak.
I think I, I did have someone bring something to my attention that I'll go ahead and share now. I was, I was actually planning on sending an email to our Director of Finance. Hi. She sent me an email. I haven't had a chance to look, but I'll share this now during my business of the council. Someone pointed out to me right before the meeting that we have $8.4 million available according to the fiscal highlights from the Comprehensive Financial Report for the period ending June 30th, 2022. So it's 15 months old, and it may be not 100% accurate, but according to this information, there is at least $8.2 million that with council approval, it's at our discretion. And I would like consideration for putting that money toward our $12.8 million budget gap on street funding.
Okay. Counsel, next person? This is not a debate back and forth with staff?
No, it's my business of the council.
Correct.
Yeah.
Who's next?
You're the one who.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McGee.
You tell me. I just wanted to do a little cleanup with our Business From the Public. A, I heard our, the second reading that we're going to have on Wednesday is for a street maintenance fee. It is not a utility fee. It will show up on the utility bill, yes, but it is for street maintenance. And just to clarify, we have not set a rate yet. This is just to authorize us to start that process, which will probably take a very long time. Would you say like a year?
At least.
At least. So it's going to be a minute. Hang in there, and we'd love to hear more feedback, so thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I have a list. It'll be short. We've been out of, out of touch for a long time, but I don't believe any of us have been idle. I had, I had a busy, busy six weeks, during which time I attended two meetings of the Hart team, three meetings of the League of Oregon Cities Women's Caucus, two meetings of the Downtown Association Board. I'm the city council liaison to that body. I did three volunteer efforts. I did the Giving a Hoot cleanup at the train station and the overpass. It was horrible. It's really nice now. I drove the golf cart shuttle at the Northwest Art and Air Festival. That was great fun. It always is. I love that job. And a week ago Saturday, I participated in the 9/11 Day of Service Project at South Albany High School, weeding the flower beds around the greenhouse. I have never been that close to that many slugs in my life. Ooh, but it looks really good now. Attended a number of events. The Hub City Village Grand Opening, which was heartwarming and delightful. What a great facility. Please build more. I hope we can support them in the future. Attended Festival Latino, which was a lot of fun. The dinner for sponsors and, and staff at the Northwest Art and Air Festival. I attended Mike Peaslee's retirement party at the police station last week, and I can't, still can't believe he's old enough to retire. And the Parks and Recreation Volunteer Dinner the same day. I met a new volunteer in the community who was, is eager to get involved and have appointed her, will be appointing her tomorrow night on the, to the Human Relations Commission. She may be one of the best qualified people I have ever met for that particular assignment. At home, we completed our solar panel project on the roof, and we are, we are generating power. It's pretty exciting to watch that on the app. I grew many hundreds of tomatoes, hundreds of tomatoes. They're the size of pearls, so they're, they're pretty tiny, but I was very successful this year. I read three books totaling about 1,300 pages. And I can report on a related matter from Business from the Public. I've been working with Chris Shendell and Erin Heimstra on the easement issue in Lynn Avenue and the Willamette neighborhood. That was brought to my attention at National Night Out, and I spoke with many of the neighbors who were here that night. So that's going to be coming back to us in more detail, I'm sure.
Excellent. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Newton Azor.
I feel like I just sneezed, so if I sneeze, I'll turn off my mic, but I only have a few things. One, so we'll start with most recent. I did attend the Albany Mushroom Festival yesterday. I'm not sure if other folks did. There were like over 6,000 people there, which is incredible for a first annual event. Like, I was, I was shocked. It was busy. Great experience, a lot of fun. I would like to see more of those events happen here in Albany. Think they're great. And I did, I, you know, did my little usual chatty thing and talked to people and like, oh, what do you like about this event? And I met someone from like out of state, and they're like, oh yeah, I'm staying in a hotel here. I really like mushrooms. And I'm like, okay, like, who would have thought? Who would, like, you know? I totally get it. Got my kids to school. They were, we're starting our third grade, and we're walking to school safely. And it's really opened my eyes to crosswalk safety in the downtown neighborhoods, especially on the routes that are to, to schools. And then I just want to give a shout out to Stacy Bel Castro and over to Matthew Rutgers. I've been bugging them a lot about some issues that constituents have come forward to me about, you know, stop, stop signs, crosswalks, and also street safety, and they've been able to answer questions really quickly and able to get back to constituents in a really quick, in a really fast manner. So thank you again.
Counselor Kocinski.
Just a tangential connection to the mushroom folks. We had a huge number of them show up at the carousel. And I was like, what's going on here? They all had a grand time, everyone, any of them that came in, so that's all I have.
Counselor McGee.
A few things. One is I received an email from the Vice President of the Mennonite Village about wild turkeys, that they are really overwhelmed and have been overcome by wild. about wild turkeys, that they are really overwhelmed and have been overcome by wild turkeys. So, and I went, I went to school in Wisconsin and college and our wild turkeys, they were dangerous for us. Like, they chased us. They're not friendly. So if we could figure out what to do with that or give some type of control over there would be really good sooner than later. She seems to be a little overwhelmed with the situation. Next thing is I attended the, Counselor Smith said we weren't idle. I was a little idle, I have to be honest. I know how to unplug because I think it's important. But I was abroad in Colombia for a little while and was able to attend the, a really amazing village in Palenque, which is about an hour from Cartagena, which was the first town founded by escaped Africans. And so it was really cool to go to there. And they still have their own education system, language, justice system. It was really, really, really awesome. And also to know that we are very spoiled in America, North America, specifically here. Last thing is that I attended the, it was a caftan cocktail crawl, where we were able to dress in caftans and support our businesses down here. We went to, well, I missed the first one, which was at Ciberus, but then met back up with them at the Vault and then at the Sweet Red. And now we are on the Sweet Reds, in the Red Room, their Instagram and their Facebook for promoting them. So it was really a nice time to support our local businesses here in Albany. And I was able to host my aunt and my sorority sister and her mom and show them everything Albany had to do and much more at like two back, two back to back crowds. And so while not necessarily idle, idle, but just like promoting Albany, I feel like everywhere I go, I'm always talking about it. And I'm a little exhausted, but, and school starts back Tuesday for me. That's all I have.
Thank you. And for me, I had a lot of things to do, but I had a great time. I attended the Hub City Grand Opening with Sandra Merkley, a lot of the folks here in this room. And the number of stories that were told and shared at that event, it was heartwarming. One lady had me tearing up. Just the stories that they were sharing with us were very impactful. And, and what they felt about moving into a place of their own while they could. And it's really a big thing for Albany. And a gentleman reproached me about building another tiny home here, tiny own village here in town. And so I turned him on to Matthew Rutgers and I stepped out of the way. Festival Latino was fantastic. I danced so much, my feet hurt. I had to take my shoes off when I got home and put them in hot water. So it was fantastic. Northwest Art and Air Festival again was a success. The Mushroom Festival, I was the mayor of Mushroom Town. I had a hat and a cape and a scepter and it was fantastic. There was 95, 95 booths, five bands, lavender sold food carts, classes and thousands and thousands of people.
They said their security said there was at least a minimum of 6,000 people, might be more.
There was no parking at Timberland Park anywhere. People were parking on Blue Ox Road, Price Road.
This was their first one, right? Pardon the interruption. I'm just verifying.
Yeah, it was the first one. What else did I do this week? Oh, I spent a lovely morning with the first graders at Sunrise Elementary School. They actually had Mayor of the Classroom campaign. It was fantastic to see that. And then Ms. France invited me to talk with the third graders because I've been going there four years. So the third graders have had them for three years and they had questions about the city. They, all of them shared, they loved the splash pad. They loved the new fairground, the playground. And in general, the kids really liked going down to the waterfront and playing on those, those, those features we provided. This week on Thursday, I mean, with Ms. Carrasco's class at Lafayette, three classes of third graders, always spending time with them in the morning. And I can tell you this, nothing during the day upsets you when you spend your morning with children. And they have great questions. They show you their pictures they've painted and they're drawn. So it's a really great thing to do that. Attended some football games and volleyball games and softball games, or excuse me, volleyball and football and soccer. And morning mingle with the Mennonite Village. They brought up the thing with the turkeys. And so I'm going to ask staff to bring back an ordinance on not feeding the turkeys. Because part of the problem is when you feed them, they multiply like mad. And fish and wildlife cannot safely remove them without some kind of ordinance being in place by the city saying, do not feed them. And then for the gentleman that spoke earlier about the ordinance at the NANA, North Albany Neighborhood Association, he was totally incorrect in what I said at that meeting. I said, before anything happens, we have to have an ordinance to authorize the staff to even begin looking at the process. Then we have to have staff, give them direction to bring back some rate options. And then we have to bring back the actual package and then vote on that. So there's four, three to four more steps that have to happen. Like Counselor Montague said, it's going to be a while. And so for him to come and say that, he was totally incorrect, especially when I brought it up at that meeting, which I was not invited to, but all the other candidates were. So as going forward, I think transparency is really important. And so when someone comes to me and says something like that, I'm going to call them out on it. He was totally inaccurate in what he, what I said at that meeting. And, and with that, I will turn it over to the city manager's deputy, not deputy, excuse me, interim. Do you have nothing?
Yeah, this isn't supposed to happen. I thought, that's why we hired a deputy city manager. Just kidding. They're both at ICMA meeting this week. So although I personally think we should not allow them both to leave town. Okay, just a couple of things that, from Business from the Public. The concern about the alleyway, for those that aren't familiar, this is a neighborhood. It's east of the Expo Center and it borders Knox Butte on the south. There's a residential area there. And what it is, is there's a really long block there. And our code requires, when you have these really long blocks, that they have, the developer has to put in a path in the center of the block so that there can be pedestrian access through because we have a standard block length. It's technical, but it happens every now and then. And so they, they did bring their concerns to us over the summer. And Matthew and I have been talking about this as, with our staff. So that will come back to the council. And what would need to happen is a vacation of that as right of way. And we'll be discussing that with council at a future meeting. So we are aware of that. The property near the former Marvin's Gardens lots, the properties Mr. Van Lee spoke about, we're also aware of that. That will also come back to a future meeting. And Sean did a good job of explaining what has to happen there. So you'll be hearing about that, not Wednesday probably, but coming up sometime soon. And then, let's see, what else? The ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance. So just to be perfectly clear, the ordinance establishes the city's legal authority to charge a, the, any future street fee that has developed, the street maintenance fee. So it does not set the fee. It just gives the city permission to charge the fee. Anytime you charge your citizens, you have to have the legal authority to do that. And then you have a separate, well, the way we do it is we have a separate process that establishes the actual rate. So no rate will, has been developed. And if it is preferable to have the ordinance pass and then develop the rate resolution. But it's technically not specifically required. And the reason I know that is because when we developed the stormwater fee, we did it this way and then there was a kerfuffle. And we ended up repealing the ordinance and then bringing it back at the same time as the resolution. So it is possible to do it that way. It's not preferable because we are investing a lot of the city's resources. We have to hire a consultant and help develop the fee. And so we do need, it is more certain for staff if the ordinance already exists. And I can talk with, about this more on Wednesday, might be better since that's on that agenda about what that rate development process would look like. But just to be clear, I just don't want there to be any misinformation out there. So that's, that's what I have to say about that tonight. Counselor Novak has her hand up. Mayor.
Thank you. When you said transparency, it brought back to mind the fact that Counselor Newton Azor and I had both requested to see the information from the consultants. We haven't seen that information yet.
It hasn't been developed.
Well, I'd like to see it before...
I understand.
I, I would really like to see that information.
Well, that'd be like putting the cart before the horse. We have not given them authorization to even develop it.
No, it's not putting the cart before the horse, sir, because based on the information that we haven't seen, city staff is telling us that people told them that they prefer a fee to a gas tax or any other means. I haven't seen that information.
Okay, you're referring to the public information?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to the information needed to develop the rate.
No.
Okay.
No. No. I, I, I've never seen that info.
I'll email that report to you. It's long, it's very long. You did get the executive summary in your packet when they came to the council.
Well, I, I just know that as, as I was reviewing information and I appreciated the report that Stacy Bel Castro gave us. But she mentioned, you know, 27 cities having a street maintenance fee. She did not mention 32 cities choosing a gas tax.
We did, just to be clear, Counselor Novak, we did talk about that way back in last November or December, whenever we talked about this. We talked specifically about the number of cities that have either a utility fee or a gas tax. We listed those out and provided tables of both. So all, and all of that information, just for the dozens of people that are watching this online, is available on the city's website at albanyoregon.gov/streets. All of those presentations. But I definitely can send you the public outreach and research report that was done. You also do have the executive summary in your council packet from this past August or late July, whenever that meeting was. So I, but I will send that to you.
Thank you. I, I thought I was going to see some distilled information that showed me clearly that you were saying the people of this town want another fee as opposed to a gas tax or any other means of funding that gap. I, I, the people I know are like Mr. Thompson and they say, absolutely not. And I'm one of them.
Can you bring that back? Resend that, please.
Yeah, I'll send that out. Sorry, just two more things. We are trying to reschedule the planning, joint planning commission meeting that's on the 30th. It conflicts with the Downtown Association Awards. And so Ann Catlin is working to try to get that rescheduled. And you'll hear, you'll either hear about it tomorrow or definitely at Wednesday's meeting to try to do the city, joint city work session with planning commission earlier. And so apologies for that scheduling conflict. We're trying to clear that up now. And then the last thing I have is again, since for those that weren't here earlier, this is Gabe's last meeting. And in addition to the mayor, we want to also recognize his efforts and thank him and wish him well. Don't forget us, Lowly, city of Albany staff, as you move on. So thanks, Gabe.
And we'll also see you at the joint meeting with the commission. So keep that going.
That's all I have, mayor.
Again, congrats to your change and you're moving on to Benton County Commission. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. So I'll see you Wednesday night at 6:00 PM.